I'd like to bring the April 4th plant regular planning board meeting to order. It is 6:02. We are being broadcast live on the cable channel and recorded for posterity. So, first up is we have administrative items and we're going to take them out of order. The approval not required, Buzzard's Bay Coalition and the Buzzard's Bay Coalition public... No, we can't do that, I'm sorry. So, we're gonna skip the Buzzard's Bay Coalition and do Prestige Auto? Is there anybody here for Prestige Auto?
No. Okay. Well, I guess I'll speak on that. Prestige Auto is requesting a temporary certificate of occupancy. I had Derek from SW Cole go out there earlier last week and provide a review compared to the as-built they submitted. And so, the review is included in the packet. And in my report, I just outlined some of the things that are not done yet, which is finish the paving, there's no parking pavement markings, and there's no parking space markings. The handicap space and appropriate markings and bollards are not installed. Monolithic Cape Cod berm along the pavement edge, along the entrance roadway, and along the pavement edge that abuts the crushed stone parking areas are not installed. Some additional rip-rab at the flared ends could be installed to reinforce from any potential washing out. The stop sign at the entrance of the roadway at Forge Road and the pylon sign have not been installed. And the plan needs to depict the entry from Forge Road into decorative masonry gates, gate posts with a manual gate. And the plan needs to depict the exposed PVC conduit along the entrance of the roadway edge on the east side. So, after speaking with Derek, after those items were addressed, I would recommend that the planning board does vote to recommend that a temporary CO be issued for Prestige Auto. I don't think that the things that are not done yet require any kind of surety, but they will be done with the revised as-built and come back for the final certificate of occupancy when they've completed those items.
Okay. But they're operating now without a CO.
I can't, I can't speak to that.
I don't think they ever close. I mean, they're doing this work to their site as they continue to operate, obviously. I mean, that's where they are. So, I don't know. I know they'd like a CO, it's probably insurance or mortgage related, but I would think we could offer them a temporary.
Right.
For how long?
I would say 90 days.
Do you want to motion, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, based on the inspection by CW Cole and the recommendation of staff, I vote to recommend that the building inspector issue a 90-day certificate of occupancy. And once revised as-builds are submitted and approved, addressing the items that were submitted by SW Cole, then we, they can request a final certificate of occupancy.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Salty Breeze, Inc., requests by the applicant to discuss the development of land for marijuana establishment.
Good evening, Chairman, Mr. Chair, Mr. Board. I'm here tonight with Brian Carney and the owner of the property on the 260 State Road. This is an existing building with a paved, somewhat disrepaired paved parking area. Here we go.
Sorry, I'm, okay, hold on.
Okay, here we go. It's on the north side of Route 6, right across from the Mid-City Scrap offices, right next to Coastal Healing, surrounded with giant swamp in the back, it's an abandoned railroad track, and this is a, this is actually the facility here, and the old used car facility here, I think that's being used right now for temporary restoration construction. This existing building, about 2,200 square feet, we're gonna keep the same footprint, we're just gonna improve the parking area, which is somewhat disrepair, and improve it into a proper parking facility for a retail establishment only. Everything? So, this is the existing conditions plan, this is what's existing on site, here's the existing building, 216, and it's first on Route 6, again, this is a construction site, this is all with the Land Conservation Trust, and this is the abandoned railroad track. What we're planning on doing is existing pavement here, go to the post.
That's all? Did you provide more than that?
Yes, I did.
Those are the only plans I saw.
Yeah.
The aerial and the...
We provided a conceptual plan, I don't know if you have.
Did you provide it in paper?
Yes.
It's not in this, did you, right? This is for the other one?
I'm not sure what you have. That's for the, you know, that's for the Buzzard's Bay Coalition. But I, I'm pretty sure I provided a conceptual plan, and that's got a report, or do you know what you're here? You don't know? Do you cross the way here? As Prestige. Well, yeah, this is the architect's. I had drafted something, but he has a conceptual plan, I think you passed it around. These things should improve the parking area up and around, provide an adequate parking spot for the amount of area of the retail facility, improve the curb cut to meet requirements of the state of Massachusetts DOT, the curb cuts on Route 6. There's no turn around in the vicinity of this, I think you know that this, again, is Coastal Healing right here. So, it should be a fairly simple curb cut plan, be approved by the Mass DOT. And just gonna be some improvements to the facade of the building, of course, signage and landscaping that I have proposed on the plan that we can't save.
So, 10 parking spaces?
What's that?
10 parking spaces?
12. That, that plan shows 10, like, the plan I had submitted has 12 parking spaces, which requires two handicap, additionally two handicaps on each side.
And so, it's just gonna be retail, they're not gonna...
Retail, great. You don't have a across the mall or anything, maybe you have a copy of that?
No, when did you submit it? Because Nadine put these packets together with the plans that she had.
Could it be rolled up with this one here?
No, that's for Buzzard's Bay.
That's the Buzzard's Bay Coalition plan. I had to hold it up with the other two that I submitted to you, so they've got it locked in there.
Did you provide them in the PDF file?
Yeah.
Let me see if I can...
Okay. Well, anyway, the parking area, which is painted in the back, it'd be drainage out in front here, which would be well away from the wetlands, all the drainage would go straight to this wetland, this is the giant wetland system flows underneath the railroad track, is pitched naturally, going from southwest to northeast, so none of the drainage will be going out onto the roadway. And we propose to put a sidewalk as requested or required on site land, move along Route 6, and actually ties into the existing facility here, but ends right in front of this property over here.
And what is that property?
This is, it used to be a used car lot, and I don't know what is being used. It looks like a staging area for construction crews, I can't really tell. I see trucks come and go, but I don't know what officially it is. It's an old car facility, because it's got bollards all in the front, chains looking like a used car facility.
And how many square feet is up one?
Up one, well, the whole lot is 4.6 acres, and about one and a half is up one. One was under flag by a biologist. It's brain septic system out in front here, a rain system right out in front that is adequate for the existing proposed facility.
I'll check that bio.
So, you're not proposing any stormwater continuation?
Yeah, stormwater's gonna go through detention pond off the side. Basically, it's very easy, the pavement's gonna pitch over to this corner, there'll be catch basin that drops down, the drop inlet, so we have to keep some sediment control, and then a detention pond which controls the stormwater. But essentially, there isn't a lot of increased flow, because what you see here in the edge of the pavement is a dash line. What you see there is it's gonna be improved slightly, so there's very little boring impervious areas proposed on the site. In fact, there'll be additional green areas, I have proposed some landscaping over here, over here on this side, and it will be most likely assigned at the entrance by a, that be sustained of the planning board.
So, in this, up to the upper left, that's a new constructed retention pond?
No, that's a pile of boulders, actually.
Oh, it's reversed, okay.
Yeah. It's actually a pile, it looks like whatever they constructed, or they pulled it out of here, I'm not sure.
How big is this building?
It's about 2,200 square feet, if you're taking...
Is it a coincidence or intentional that you're sited next to Coastal Healing?
I think it's a coincidence, yeah.
The zone where you're allowed to have marijuana establishments in this town is very, very narrow, very, very thin.
Yeah.
And I think within that zone, there's relatively very few properties where these could potentially be located. I came before you guys in July of last year to gather your thoughts, come back with some more definitive engineering plans. Our business plan, our proposal, is very different than that of Coastal Healing, which is a vertically integrated, meaning it's a beautiful...
Okay. Did you identify yourself so that we know if the...
Yeah, I'm Brian Carney, I'm the consultant for Salty Breeze, Inc.
And just for the record, this is file number 23-011PAC, so...
It is a large area, both the parking area along the building, I guess, four, six here to ten, and then this five across the back, exactly 15, but two of those are handicap spots, right here at the entrance of the building.
So, how is your business different than Coastal Healing from just a retail standpoint?
So, when you're a vertically integrated facility, a large part of your success is to gain bigger margins by selling your own products, and you're not encouraged to have as much variety. We plan on being able to source from some of the largest multi-state operators that have tier 10 growths, so we can get more products into the store.
Thank you. I mean, I was, so listen, Brian, it was four months ago, we had the folks from Coastal Healing in here, and because we had put some restrictions on the number of visitors they could have per hour, and after barely a month in business, they were doing way under what they had projected. And they gave us these facts of, you know, that, things like, I've got the, I brought, I found this, but they said, well, this was like, six weeks after they opened, they had had a total of 78 appointments, or that was about an average of two per day. This is, this is going back to, from November, October to November, I guess it was. And they also said that, and this one really caught my attention, they said, and you probably know all this, but I mean, it surprises me that you're here. There are now, it said in this letter that they submitted to us, asking us to release these, remove these restrictions. They said, well, there are 16, there are now 16 cannabis establishments within a 25-mile radius, and two additional are opening soon in Fall River and Dartmouth. So, if they've opened, that's 18. So, I, that's what's caught me by surprise, is that you want to be opening a business that sounds like it's not, it's not thriving at this point in Westport, anyway.
It really comes down to your business model, your business plan. So, I can tell you personally, I own a dispensary in Oxbridge, Mass. There's four on my street alone, within a two-mile stretch, and then another three about another mile or two down the street. It's a highly saturated area. We have been lucky enough, strategic enough, to get a number two spot in that area, essentially beating everybody else out. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it comes down to capitalism, it's creating the strongest business plan to pull customers in from far, and what can you do to have customers drive past four or five other dispensaries to come to your store? So, that's what we've been able to do in Oxbridge, and we feel like we can do the same here. The advantage that we have here in this location is the car count. There is a higher car count here than there is, say, where my dispensary is located in Oxbridge. And so, we feel that with its strategic location, with our relationships with these multi-state operators, and with our somewhat unique business model, we'll be able to pull a lot of the customers from Fall River, from New Bedford, to business in Westport.
So, if you're gonna pull that many, do you have enough parking spaces?
So, when I say a lot, we look at, generally speaking, we look at 50 to 100 customers a day to be around the average right now, and that's spread out throughout the day. If you look at my store in Oxbridge, it's a pretty even distribution of customers throughout the day. I don't think we've ever had more than eight in the store at any given time. So, the amount of parking spaces are adequate, they're more than adequate. If we were to ever get to a point where our volume exceeds the amount of parking spaces we have, we would have a parking control officer out there. But if you look at our transaction time in Oxbridge, we have customers in and out in five minutes or less. A lot of our model is an online ordering model, so if you were to do the math, with this many parking spots, we could service around 400 to 500 customers a day, spread out throughout the day. We don't think we're gonna come anywhere as even close to that. So, we feel this amount of parking spaces is adequate.
So, give me an idea of where you are in Oxbridge, just so I can compare it to our situation here on Route 6.
So, if you're familiar with Oxbridge, there used to be a car wash on 146A. So, off of now exit six, used to be exit three off of 146, right on 146A. If you were to take a left out of our establishment, you hit the industrial park off of 146A, there's another retail location there. You would continue down 146A, heading towards Rhode Island, you have another retail establishment on the right, very large one, you have another one where Marty's Liquors is located off to the left.
Could you tell us the address so we could bring it up for the board?
So, it's, our address is 454 Quaker Highway.
Thank you.
Sure. And then if you were to go up 146, down one more exit, you would see Caroline's Cannabis and Capital Cannabis.
These are all in Oxbridge, or the six?
These are, two are on the border, within a couple hundred yards of Oxbridge. One's located in Douglas, on the border of Oxbridge, and the other is located in, I believe it's Millville, but it is a stone's throw away from Oxbridge. So, if you were to look, here's where we're located. There's another, if I'm looking at this correctly. Okay, so there's another dispensary located in the industrial park, which is right down here on River Road. I believe this is the building right here.
And where's the McDonald's off of 146A?
McDonald's is just down here. So, McDonald's, there's another two dispensaries about 400 yards past that McDonald's on the other left.
Do you get your customers from people who are traveling between Providence and Worcester on 146, or do you get them from Oxbridge and Whiteman'sville and North Bridge and...
We pull from all over. We pull our farthest customers, we have data on all this, actually come from Hartford, Connecticut. They travel all this way, they make big bulk purchases at once, again, because of our business model.
Why is your...
A lot of our customer base comes from the northeast section of Rhode Island, so they're driving past a number of the dispensaries to get to us. And then we do have a very loyal customer base from the Oxbridge location itself. So, yeah, this is our building, the old car wash.
So, I mean, I don't think it's apples and apples comparison compared to Route 6, which has a lot of traffic.
Correct.
So, this is sort of off the beaten path, you gotta know you're there to go, right?
Exactly. And that's why I do think that this location in Westport could be a better location than what we're dealing with in Oxbridge.
So, I'm just concerned about the parking. We had a lot of discussion with the other dispensary about parking, especially, you know, seeing what happened in Fall River when it opened up. What is that noise?
That's the microphones that come with...
Sorry.
But the concern moved on around.
Yeah, I, you know, if you were to look at the state of Fall River when it first opened up versus where the market is now, it is not apples and apples, it is, it is a very saturated market right now. You know, that report from Coastal Wellness, 78 customers over, I forget how many days, is, you know, it's...
It was, it was 38 customers over 78 days.
Well, that was because they had to make appointments.
78, I wanted to say, yeah, 78 over 38 days.
There is room to expand on that site, very easily parking. We're showing what is required, depending on the guidelines, but there is room for more parking without too much trouble on site.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
What would be your hours typically?
Typically nine to nine would be the latest. What I typically do is in the winter times, 10 to 8. The summertime will be a little bit more light, it's nine to nine.
I've got a couple of questions for Sean. So, Sean, they have an existing Title V on that site that's past this title?
Yeah, we have, it's a rail, which is a big race system, you go by, you see a mound off to the side.
They're already tied into the water.
Okay.
They're already tied into the water, I mean?
They're not tied into the water?
Yes.
Oh, they are tied in?
No, they're not tied into the water.
They are tied into the water, yeah. It went further down the corridor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
What site service?
I imagine a inch and a half.
See, I mean, that would be one, I mean, it's the selectmen of the sewer water commissioners, but I'd be looking that, you get a big enough service across the road, like, say, a six-inch, so you could do fire and domestic, and maybe put a hydrant, so it's out of middle Route 6, where they come across with the service.
And Mid-City's tapped in, they are pretty precise services, yeah.
They got a two-inch.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's...
I would think that this is probably an inch and a half, if I had a guess.
I think with the sewer and water, I think coming through, we're gonna be changing that stuff, so I'm trying to just, I'm getting to that point, too, in the existing septic. I think we're pretty close to that sewer section, our contract one being ready to go. So, you know, we'd be looking that they tie in as soon as, you know, we can use this existing Title V and make sure that you become one of our sewer water customers.
I think, I mean, it's a low-yield water and sewer, I mean, it's a retail...
I mean, we get the, we get the hydrant across the street, fire protection, and, I mean, they didn't bring one across for the other. I mean, they got a, they got a fire line, but I didn't see, you know, in that area. Another thing that, kinda, like, with your business plan, I, I mean, I like it a little bit better than the big metal building next door. They might be having problems with customers to the kids' warehouse or something like that. I mean, I would like to see, I mean, that building's stuck out right now, something that more fits the character, kinda what Westport is.
The architect had a rendering in the package, right?
Somewhere I saw that.
Yeah, he put it to brick, I seen brick, but, I mean, I'm like, kinda, one of the things I keep coming across is, you know, Cumberland Farms, all the Cumberland Farms around us, except for the two in town, look like they belong in Westport.
Right.
If we could model something that looked like it belonged in Westport on Route 6, we're trying to really improve this corridor and...
So, the official name that we, I think we ultimately landed on was Port Supply, a little pun, Westport, as well, you know, pace farm edge to the fishing area. The gentlemen that own the business have other businesses in town. Our goal is to give back to this town as best we possibly can. The aesthetic theme of this location is very much going to tie into the mariner theme of this town.
Is this what the, is this what the, this is an elevation of the, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
You can't see it from there. Looks sort of like a Greek temple to me, but...
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what it looks like now.
Looks like a Greek, Greek pizzeria.
Yeah, exactly. There is iterations of businesses, but that's what it looks like.
Yeah. The other thing is, we, we require for Coastal Healing a sidewalk, we're trying to have every business...
Yeah, I understand.
Do you have that in?
We've got a sidewalk proposed along the front, connecting to the Coastal Healing and running on to, basically, it's on the next property.
So, that's, what are these, those trees or some, those black dots?
Yeah, there's a concrete walk, it's hard to see, starting here and coming across.
Okay.
Sorry, you know...
So, where's the septic, Sean, in this area?
Not right here.
Why? Give new meaning to the term ICs, I guess. John. So, are you going to do any changes to the building? Besides the outside?
Aesthetic changes, landscaping, painting, no structural changes, development.
Anybody else?
So, no action required, not...
No, it's just they, they want to know if we have any problems, so, players, any problems?
I don't have any concerns. I think if I were to add anything, I think I would say that I would caution over, over provision of parking, just because of the increase in pervious surfacing in the area.
Yeah.
I think the Coastal Healing next door has demonstrated that the demand is not gonna be what was initially anticipated with that store, and so, you know, I would caution against requiring more, more impervious surfacing on the site. against requiring more, more pervious surfacing on the site.
Like in the proposal, if you could give some better renderings of what the facade would look like, landscaping plans, so we can see what this is going to look like off our corridor.
Is there anything with parking or engineering that you see, would you want improvements?
I, I think, I think you know pretty much what Mass Highway needs.
Yeah. We've got a twenty-four foot entrance there, and that's more than what they need, but it's, I know there are going to be concerns about queuing up on Route 6, but there is a breakdown lane there, and there is, you know, ability to slow down.
Okay. So I, I would entertain a motion if anybody has one. I don't think we need to, to make one. If you are comfortable with, it doesn't seem like we have any big problems. You still get to come with the, you know, stormwater details and a lesson. And to, to get approval, you're going to need to get, as you know, the okay from Mass Highway, even though you're not changing, I don't know if you're changing the driveway or not, but you're still...
The driveway's actually more whole right now, there's actually no curbing, there's no any, it's just you pull off, you go on, it's kind of haphazard, and I know Mass Highway's going to want improvements because it's a, they'll consider this a more intense use.
What do you know of it?
Yeah, hopefully.
Thank you.
One of the other things too is, is, I think it would be the select board, but we've had, we had a couple of issues and still outstanding on the one next door on doing the, the patchwork into Mass Highway. You know, I think you're going to need to negotiate with the selectmen some type of connection fee and how that gets permitted and make sure it's done by Mass Highway contractor. We're still trying to get it paved, I mean, the plan's open now, and I'm just hearing that.
But they're still...
Yeah.
Get a get one?
I mean, it's not something that we, we're responsible for, but the last one seems that Mass Highway... So now we're responsible, but it's going to be your responsibility, and that's going to be negotiated with the selectmen.
Very much appreciate your time. Thank you.
So, now I'd like to just go backwards to Prestige Auto, I think you're here. We already covered this before you got here, and we voted to issue a temporary C.O. that has the building inspector issue a temporary C.O., but there's still some things to be done, but...
Yeah, I'm aware of it. I'm aware of the few things that the contractor listed.
So, we're going to recommend to the building inspector that he issue a temporary C.O., and then you've got ninety days to come back and get a full...
Yeah, we've got pretty much everything going on, the signs, the, the, what do you call it, the burn?
Yes.
That was supposed to be done at the time, yeah, J.R. and Sons forgot to put it. So I called them, but there was already a thing in the winter, he says he couldn't do anything, he says, as soon as the, he says you'll do it this month, that's why he told me.
Good. Could you give us your name, just for the record?
Manuel Sarment.
Great, thank you. So you're all set?
So, the C.O., how, when, why pick it up and where?
They have to communicate with the building inspector?
So I'll, I'll email him. Yep, I'll email him tomorrow morning, so whenever Ralph has it ready, just he can come down, I'll, I'll sign it.
I think that's that woman. Been a long time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now the two items for Buzzards Bay Coalition. One is an approval not required, A&R, file number twenty-three dash oh oh four A, request by the applicant for endorsement of a plan of land showing two lots for land located at five five nine Main Road, map sixty-nine, lot twelve. And as well, we're going to have the public hearing for Buzzards Bay Coalition, file number twenty-three dash oh oh five S.P. dash F.F., which is a request by the applicant to consider the special permit of flexible frontage application for Buzzards Bay Coalition for properties located at five five nine Main Road, assessors map sixty-nine, lot twelve, Westport pass.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm on the board of the Buzzards Bay Coalition, and so I want to recuse myself and will not participate in either the discussion nor the voting on either of these matters, which should mean this will take a lot less time than anything else I participate in.
So do you. Okay.
Good evening to the board. My name is Attorney Mackenzie Long. I am here on behalf of Buzzards Bay Coalition and on behalf of Stephanie Cormier, who is purchasing the house, which is located on the eighty thousand square feet shown here. Are you planning to do the A&R first, or would you like to discuss the special permit? Is there an order?
We could do the A&R first, yeah.
Okay. On the A&R, is there anything, any questions?
Well, if you could, maybe the, show us the two lots. Yeah.
Okay, so on the, this is the yield plan to demonstrate that the proposed space here could be subdivided into four lots. The plan is to move forward with the special permit after to subdivide rather than into four lots, into two lots. As I'm sure some of you are aware, about a year ago, this process started, Buzzards Bay Coalition was able to purchase the entirety of the property. They exercised the right of first refusal under sixty-one A and purchased the entire property. My client, Stephanie Cormier, was the original buyer here, and so Buzzards Bay wanted to work with her and be able to give her an opportunity to still, you know, participate in this property, and by doing so, they want to subdivide the house lot off of the entire, I believe it's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, it's about thirty acres. And so we have the yield plan here to show the total number of lots that could be approved under an A&R plan, and so that is the, this here is the house lot. This is a proposed driveway, I'm sorry, subdivision road to service lots two, three, and four, but the overall plan here is to combine lots two, three, and four into one lot and keep the house lot separate on the eighty thousand square foot parcel as shown there. This parcel is completely upland with no wetlands. The wetlands in the back on the bigger parcel are far less than the uplands. I believe we have over ninety thousand square feet of, yeah, greater than ninety thousand square feet of uplands, which meets the requirement for the flexible frontage under eight point six of the zoning bylaws.
So you're the attorney for Ms. Cormier?
I am.
And not for Buzzards Bay?
Well, I'm working with Buzzards Bay, we came up with a plan here to share the cost. Buzzards Bay had me be the attorney representing to handle the approval of the plan.
Okay. So, do we have an A&R plan somewhere?
There should be two plans. I have a yield plan, which is this, and I also have the, the main plan of two lots.
It's the same. It's the same lots, so, is that the A&R?
Yeah, this is just my lot. But it's the same as the paper.
Yep. So could you pass one of those around?
Yeah.
You have the subdivision of the two lots?
No, just the...
Well, I have this one here, Dan.
Yeah, we have the subdivision of the two lots.
Yes? I don't have any other plans.
Maybe further into the backend office in the line?
Um, I don't... No. Oh, you know what, it might be...
Where's the frontage for lot two? It's fifty-two feet, fifty-two feet.
Do you want, I have a smaller copy of the showing of two lots subdivision.
So, Michael or Amy, does fifty-two feet fit into our flexible frontage?
Yes, because it needs to be fifty feet.
Needs to be fifty feet because we have twenty-nine acres.
Yes.
There's a sliding scale, right?
Fifty feet is what you need, was the minimum of what you need though, in order to...
And that's what he maintains?
Right.
Exactly.
In order to meet the requirement for the sliding scale, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of, a minimum of a hundred and eighty thousand square feet with a minimum upland of ninety thousand square feet, which we have both of those.
And the other lot has a hundred and fifty feet?
Uh, the other lot has, I believe it's two hundred and twenty-six feet.
And that's one point eight four acres, eighty thousand square feet.
Yes, two hundred and twenty-six point three six feet of frontage for the home. Part of the reason for doing that is to preserve the existing stone walls around the property, and the coalition intends to construct a small access road along the side here to be able to access paths and the main, you know, they're going to put walking paths. Buzzards Bay also owns property over here and up in the back over here, so they're connecting to all of their other properties around Stone, Stone Creek, I believe it is.
Okay. So I'm very familiar with this, so, I think this is, do anybody have any questions? So does, I assume then that lot two is, has a conservation restriction?
Yes, yes.
I think the CPC actually had that funded.
I think CPC is paying for some of it.
Yeah.
I know that they have to, it has to remain billable for them for the purpose of their funding requirements, but I do believe there is a conservation restriction placed on the lot, and they have kept it under sixty-one A as far as I'm aware.
And they're going to retain ownership?
Of the main lot.
The big lot?
Yes, yes. They have expressed no intent to subdivide or sell. The purpose here was to preserve this big parcel for conservation.
And the, the land to the north that goes along Main Road, that's all one parcel?
The eighty thousand square feet?
No. It says right in the middle, number five twenty-one, the address.
Those two, these lots right here? Talking this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's Mitch Petty, he's grandson of the home, he's got ownership of all this one.
Yeah, and he was the seller of the entire parcel back last year when this process also started.
I remember. Okay. So, planners, what do you suggest on the A&R?
I would endorse the A&R.
Just for, for reference, Jim, this is, this is the parcel that received an N.E.P. mini grant award for thirty thousand dollars to support conservation.
Right, and it's a lot that was in sixty-one A, in the town opted to take their option and give it to Buzzards Bay.
I'm very familiar with it, it's gave before us, so...
Yep.
And I'm glad that it's worked out this way. So I would entertain a motion to endorse the A&R.
So, I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled AP sixty-nine, lot twelve, Main Road, Westport, Massachusetts, Buzzards Bay Coalition, Inc., one fourteen, Front Street, New Bedford, Mass, assessors map sixty-nine, lot twelve, because the plan complies with the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, in one extension.
Okay, now we take up the flexible frontage special permit.
So on that, the purpose and intent of the flexible frontage here is to reduce potential residential development density, future vehicular trips, road congestion, demand for public services, number of curb cuts, preserving the natural resources visible along the roadways, facilitate movement of the wildlife, protect traditional access to backland, open space. I'm sure you're all aware of the rest of the language of the bylaw. This plan that we have demonstrates all of the requisites for the reduced frontage by allowing the coalition to move forward with the flexible frontage. This will eliminate the potential subdivision for lot two, three, and four here, keep it all as one. The plan is to remain as a conservation area, wildlife is free to roam, and, you know, there will be paths, as I mentioned earlier, for the, you know, town to access and walk around and enjoy the natural resources of this property. And I know that the, my client Stephanie, her intent with the farmhouse is to just improve it to current standards, but retain most of the natural historic structure that is there. It is an old house, it's, needs quite a substantial amount of work, which she is prepared to undertake and is ready and eager to get started. This process originally began in April of last year, when Stephanie entered into the agreement to purchase the property, and we are now a year, year later, where we're hopefully going to be able to close on the property with the approval by the board for the flexible frontage.
I, I think it's a good thing, I think it complies with flexible frontage by law, so would I. Entertain a motion.
Okay. Well, then I move that we approve the special permit, flexible frontage, plan of land dividing plat sixty-nine, lot twelve, in Westport, Mass, for Buzzards Bay Coalition, for the property located at five fifty-nine Main Road, assessors map sixty-nine, lot twelve, as shown on this submitted plan.
And at the same time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Can you put that in the motion?
So make a, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. I, I am happy that it worked out with her.
As am I, I believe everybody is. The coalition was happy that we could come to an agreement for everybody to at least be able to benefit from the, you know, property as it is. Quick question was the appeals period, is that twenty-one days?
Twenty days.
Twenty days, including weekends?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you all, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Mr. Chair, I would now like to recuse myself from all future public hearings, noting how quickly this one went. I think in the interest of time, I could do the service to the planning board by just staying out of everything.
Yeah, but it was devoid of any humor. So we still need you. So we still need you.
Okay, uh, let's see, what's next, uh? Assistant planners report.
Yep. Okay, so, since our last meeting, I've had, uh, and a homeowner on Walters Way come in about the roadway. So after talking to Jim Hartnett, I think we can take the same protocol that we're doing for Mya Way and do it for Walters Way. So if I could have your blessing that I can start, um, sending a demand letter to Walters Way and give them the forty-five day period.
Yep.
Um, and there's twenty-four thousand insurity that we're holding for that one, so I don't think that if, if we were to approve the road, I don't think it would.
I thought you were gonna say that you were gonna fix it.
I'm personally gonna go out, um, and gravel it myself, yes, but I was gonna say, I don't think that, um, we could even pave it because of the drainage issues, but maybe the highway department could agree on improving it somehow with maybe some compacted gravel. I don't know if Manny has any comments on, on that.
Had it been constructed and inspected, the, the design subgrade, they wouldn't have any problems. Now, looking at the drainage, they, they got septic, they have septic systems into where they had it cut into the roadway, so they got all this stuff. You have a telephone pool, and when they waived the overhead electric, that was temporary, not a temporary, that was a service to one house before it was a subdivision, and then they let them keep it. So one of those pools is in the road. They get all that other drainage that they filled in. I mean, the best, the best thing would be to do is just, yeah, just grade it right out, put the, take that pipe out of there and put the swale back the way it was originally designed. Then you could probably, you know, the highway department could probably do it for that cost.
Oh, sure, but, but then paving or not?
Not paving, there won't be any money to pay.
Not paving, you said, yeah.
Had, had they, had they followed the original design that was just for gravel, which it was a, Alex Krasnitsky was the engineer, it was way overdesigned.
Yeah.
Was perfect for pavement, it had a swale around the whole road, but they've actually filled in the swale past the road, so.
Right, they filled in the swale, but they didn't construct the, the roadway respect. Because the spec for gravel road is the same as the underlying for a road in Westport. So it's the same twelve inches of gravel, it's the same type of gravel, it's the same everything, it's just not paved, so.
It wouldn't have been a problem.
Wouldn't have been a problem, and it's also narrower than it's supposed to be.
But again, this is another thing with, with houses being built on the road before it was finished, and just keep giving permits and people, COs and people moving in. Yeah, that's very unfortunate. I mean, it would have been a really nice subdivision.
Yes.
It still can be.
So that's where I am with Walters Way. Um, I just received an update for the harbor water study from Weston and Sampson today around four forty-five, so once we digest that, we'll, we'll just burst it out and see what Frank has to say about the next steps and the pricing.
Is there a big report?
Uh, no, it's a page and a half. Yep. Um, for Mya Way, I sent a letter to the select board requesting the authorization of appropriation of funds for the expenditure of surety for the completion of the roadway. Once they approve that at their next, uh, meeting, a letter will be sent to the homeowners of Mya Way explaining that the highway department will be out there making improvements to the private roadway. Um, for Salt Marsh ownership, I reached out to the assessors again and asked if they had any plans dating back to a hundred, a hundred fifty years, and they only have plans that maps, that date back to the sixties.
How did they assess them?
I can send you the email if you like.
Yeah, that's crazy.
I also reached out to, um, is it the Historical Commission, the chair, Judd? I think his name is Judd, I apologize if it's not, um, but he also said that he doesn't.
Rudd, Eddie.
Rudd, Rudd, sorry, sorry Rudd, if you're watching. Um, Rudd doesn't have any, um, maps either of anything historical relating to that.
Did he try Jen, Jen or me?
Jenny or me?
Is she on the Historical Commission?
Yeah, she's the director.
So I, I sent, um, just an email to the Historical Commission itself and then also to Rudd, so hopefully Jennifer will get back to me.
She, she would be the one that would know, because she has all this old stuff. In fact, we have a, a map in our house that is old Westport, and it has names on every house.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be stuff from that, that period.
Yeah.
You get them framed at partners, I mean, they sell.
Maybe I should just go to partners. For Westport, Port, Sand and Stoller, I reached out for them for an update and hopefully schedule a pre-construction meeting in the near future. And for the Route eighty-eight Sullivan Drive, this, um, the saltage, I reached out for an update and to schedule a pre-construction meeting, and an update was provided to me earlier this evening that said that the solar project construction, um, has continued to commence under the building and electrical permits that were issued December of twenty twenty-two. The construction crew has continued to receive materials and has completed the removal of brush and trees to make way for the construction traffic and future works. The construction crew has been working on the civil components of the site, including grading and roadways. The team continues to monitor and follow the stormwater protection measures. So I sent them an email back stating that, um, just to basically echo what we said in December when we gave them the, the extension that they need to give us a topographic survey and confirmation report, so we can give that.
They also still, as we talked about this in the, here in the extension here, that they need to give us a heads up so you can go out for a pre-construction, or with coal or something.
Yep, so I, I did mention that in the email as well, so.
Is this Westport Sand and Stone?
No.
No, this is Route eighty-eight Sullivan. Uh, Westport Sand and Stone, I haven't heard back from them yet, but.
I think they work out there.
Yeah, they're.
Yes. Yep.
So the other thing is, is like when we talked about the Nepalese and the permit, so that's a two-year permit. So most of the times they get all the engineering ready as, once the, only when they're ready to start construction. Like they have everything filed, they don't get that permit until they're ready to start, because it only lasts for two years. So if you need to follow up on that stuff and pre-construction, you know, I mean, when you're, when you're requesting that, just ask them if the Nepalese permit is, is valid.
Would you like to be present for a pre-construction meeting?
Yes, I would love that.
Okay. So I, I did ask in the email dates and times for which they are available, so I can coordinate something, so hopefully you'll be hearing from me shortly, once they reply.
So this is, we're not dealing with Carty, we're dealing with the, uh, the company that's putting stuff in, right?
Yes.
Which, so Fenagro was up there, it could be just land clearing, I don't know if they're actual installers, they might be clean clearing for Carty, that's who's been up there working.
Carty's been up there?
Fenagro.
Fenagro, who's been up there?
He's out of Rhode Island, next to the Johnston landfill.
Well, I guess the, the other issue is that I think when we have these meetings, that we should confirm with those companies who still owns the property. Because, you know, they, they come and they present and they say they have the permission with the landlord to do this with the leasehold. But I think that Carty is bankrupt, or soon will be.
And the bonding companies are running some of the, the Mass Highway projects that he has going on, right?
Okay. I'll, I'll follow up with, with all of them, but.
The, uh, I'm back to ownership of Marshes, there are two other ways. One, the, the Patrick Wailing Museum is the old Dartmouth, the historical site, Old Dartmouth includes Westport. And so they might, the other is if you are interested in a specific parcel, the registry of deeds. You know, if we somehow got an intern and, uh, someone at the registry could take the intern under his or her wing and said, "Look at this deed, the deed will go back," and that'll identify owners back to forever.
That's what the Historical Commission recommended.
Yep.
Well, if we wait long enough, the, the Marshes will be gone, they'll be underwater, then the state will own it.
Then the state will eventually own everything, right? Okay, procrastination solves everything, but, but be patient.
Uh, also, I'll, I did, I, I sent an email to Ralph about Stacy Lane. They're very active on that site, so I'll have a conversation with Ralph about, uh, the status of that, there's been.
I, I mean, my understanding, so the contractor can't build all that stuff at his own peril, he just can't release the houses. My, my other worry would be that this stuff isn't being inspected.
Right, and I also have a concern, and I haven't gone out on the property and specifically looked at one, but there is a concern by and butter that the house is not placed correctly compared to the approved plan, which I had emailed the building inspector, asking him how that could be if a foundation permit was pulled and then you would have to inspect a foundation before you build a house.
Before they start framing, he needs an ASB plan, so he should have all of them, that should be, like, he should be able to go and knock on it, go and ask for them, have a look at it.
It's within the setback, right? That's what she planned?
So this, this.
It's in the setback?
Yeah, it's within the side yard setback or rear yard setback?
That happened to my neighbor, so it's a narrow lot next to them, and their house was gonna be right on the setback line, or cocked this way. Well, the guy who came and did the foundation cocked it this way, so, you know, fighting his house is violating the ten foot setback. What do you do?
They used to make us rip the foundations out, well, that's kind of what happened, I can think. But, um, this, I believe this builder on Stacy Lane is also the one that's coming before us to change Francis' property.
Yes. But those are my updates.
Can I just ask a question, Amy, on solar, other solar systems, did, uh, I had mentioned that I wondered whether they had actually started or, or, or built the one on Soul's Way, you know, which is off Drift Road? Because I, I didn't see any construction there, and, uh, and that was approved about three years ago.
You talking about the solar?
Solar, large-scale solar.
Is that the Dan Perry one?
Yeah.
I, I believe when I looked into that, and I didn't see anything also on the, the aerials.
Yeah, I, so, um, now, so remind me, how long, if, when we issue a special permit, how long is that good for, before they have to ask for a continuance or something?
I believe it's two years.
But it could have been extended because of COVID, being liable to the state, so we need to look into that, because the, like, two thousand eight, uh, came along, the other economic catastrophe we got. They, they extended all these things for years.
I do think though that the COVID extension though would have expired by now.
Well, that brings up a good point, it would be, uh, nice, perhaps, if we could get, uh, a list of a kind of a status report of the, uh, solar farms we've approved and where they stand.
I think we have one that's fairly recent in the office that we could send out.
And have any expired, uh, or were they extended by some state decree because of COVID? Or are they close to being expired, or kind of where they stand in the chain? So that we can know is something close to, to expiring, uh, but I think because we've approved a ton of them.
Yep, and four of them just got extended within the past couple months.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, well, that's why I asked about, uh, CV East, North America, Soul's Way, because this, the one you gave me some, a couple of months ago, had it listed as being constructed, but I don't think that's.
Well, there's, there's, there were two over there, one was already built.
Right.
And that could be the one, Soul's Way, two right in between them.
Well, that was, uh, oh, oh, uh, Two-Tell Way.
Tuttle Way.
Tuttle Way, yeah, so.
Yeah, the Soul's Way one was pretty close to it, from what I recall, but.
It was a wedding.
Yeah, but from the aerial, I didn't see that it was constructed.
Yeah, if they've been constructed, it'd be nice to have a few photographs.
Sure.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you, Amy, uh, Michael, the report?
Yes.
In the packet.
So the first update I have is the, is on the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting zoning amendments. Um, legal council had no further comments on those, and so there were no revisions to the Warren articles that I submitted to Jim Hartnett last month. And so I will now revise our presentation for town meeting, and I will circulate that with the board. I also follow up with, um, the town moderator to see when he would like to have a draft of that. And so I'll have that ready for the next planned meeting.
So in all the public hearings we've had on this, all the sessions, discussions, and the people we've passed to review it, we've gotten no comments?
Um, that's more or less correct, I think we had some comments from the ZBA and.
Well, that's basically because we developed them with the ZBA, but beyond our, are developing them with the ZBA, we've gotten no comments from public or legal counsel or town administrator or anybody else. So in terms of presenting it to, to the public, this has been vetted and no one's found any objections.
And I think we could ask the, the moderator if we could combine some of these things, so we're not doing, I don't know how many articles there are, but this is a bunch, it could be just combined into one whole.
I agree with that, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of small edits here and there.
technical corrections.
Yeah. Next, I have the, uh, congressional directed spending request, so Bob Daler and I worked on a, um, a five point five million dollar appropriations request with Representative Keating, Senator Warren, and Senator Markey's offices. These funds would be for the initial, uh, water and sewer trunk from Fall River to Route eighty-eight. I don't have any definitive timetable for when the, you know, they'll make decisions on those, and so I'll update once I hear anything on that. Um, and also, in conjunction with Jim Hartnett, we submitted a four million dollar appropriations request with Representative Keating's office. And this is for restoration of the, um, downstream area from Hicks Bridge, of the ecosystem downstream from Hicks Bridge. And that would involve removal of stone debris and demolished remains of the former bridge piers around the existing bridge openings. And that would have the effect of improving the tidal exchange downstream from the bridge.
So I've sat in a lot of those meetings, I didn't know we were at a point where we're gonna be asking for money for it, because I thought we didn't know what we wanted.
Jim really took the lead on it, um, so he was encouraged by Representative Keating's office to submit for that.
So, do you know the details of the plan or just the money?
I can, I can forward you the details of the plan.
I mean, are we gonna put the rubble in the holes or are we gonna take the rubble away, that's the question?
Um, I'm not really familiar with the details of the plan.
The Army Corps was the one that came up with the two options, one to take it away, and the other one to fill in the holes. One to take it away, and the other one to fill in the holes that are the deep holes. And then there's been consternation from fishermen that the holes are repositories of large oysters, which would be, that habitat would be removed by doing that, even though it would create more flushing rubble with the, closer to the surface. And the removing the rubble was much more expensive. So the Army Corps looked at it for 10 or 15 years and finally came up with an option. It has two options. One is to leave the rubble there, that's like $2.5 million, and one to remove it is like $6 million. So.
I got a little inside of that. My son dove those scum holes from Mike Sullivan.
Just recently?
Yeah, did the YouTube video. And I saw those reports from the Army Corps. So I think there's no way that they can put that rubble in the scum holes. And I don't see how it would have been cheaper to put the rubble in the scum holes than to remove it. I think we're only talking like 3,000 yards of rubble, you know, most be clammed out from the landing. You can do it from both sides. It doesn't seem to be like it's that major of a thing. And I, I think I heard somewhere along the line too that they, they have some design for new, redoing that whole landing down there. I would just hope that they're trying to coordinate all of this together.
Wouldn't that be nice? So anyway.
Yeah. Again, Jim took the lead on that. I just gave him some guidance on the pieces of the application that you needed to pull together. So I can.
I guess those scum holes are quite significant with the technical size oysters in there and the spat, and they're seeding the rest of the rubble. Something I don't think we want to fill with debris.
Well, it's a sure sign of summer. As you know, it's, I think it's kind of like a rite of passage for kids to get up on the, on the bridge and jump into the channel so that they're not jumping on the rocks. And that included my grandson last summer. I had to take him down there. But this weekend, I was driving to the dump and there were three or four girls, young teenage girls, on the bridge. And they were taking their, their shirts and pants off. They had bathing suits, but they were getting ready to, it looked like they were going to jump. I mean, I just kept driving, but I thought, well, that's it. Even if they don't, you know, it's a kind of a sign of.
It was rainy last weekend.
Summer, well, no, it was Sunday, Sunday morning.
Oh, it was still chilly.
Okay.
Is that something that you part talking?
I did not, no.
So I, I have a, next up, I have a series of updates from things going on with SERPED. So as you all know, they produced a housing production plan survey for us, and it's still, still online. You can access that at surveymonkey.com/r/westport-housing. The link is up here on the screen as well. And so the point of the survey is to see what kinds of housing residents would like to see built in Westport, and that'll inform draft, or the update to the housing production plan. The, we also met, Jim, Amy and I met with their staff as well to talk about open space residential development. And so we provided our, well, Jim provided his, and Amy provided some of their, their background with, their experience with Westport's open space residential developments. I think it's been pretty, pretty limited and not, I think the response from the development community, community's been a little bit disappointing as, you know, hasn't really been taken advantage of. And so SERPED is working to develop a best practices model based on these interviews that they're doing with communities and the region to come up with a model for this type of development.
So it's interesting that they also said that they were surprised that we had such poor experience with it because they felt that our bylaw was one of the best ones they're seeing.
Just as what it is, I guess. Next, there is a fairly long range and general planning initiative that they have going on. It's the Southeastern Mass Priority Development and Protection Areas. And so SERPED's partnering with MBTA to determine where future investments are going to have the most significant impact. So that can be investments in preservation or investments in development. And so they're trying to see where local community priorities intersect from a regional perspective and from a Commonwealth wide perspective. They are going to present the framework for this plan to the select board on May 1st, and then I anticipate that there will be a joint meeting between the planning board, or there will be a joint meeting with the planning board and the conservation commission for SERPED to present to both entities.
As Jim knows, this is not a new effort. I mean, this began, what, 15 years ago, 20 years ago?
When you were on the South Coast.
Yeah.
Right, so this is.
It worked, it worked well. I mean, we, we formed a subcommittee here in Westport to do this, and we had like three public meetings.
So these areas were identified, delineated, and by each town, then each town's plan was shown, you know, so everyone could see. You didn't want just a priority protection area for Westport. You wanted to develop ecosystems on a regional scale. So I'm sure they're not reinventing the wheel. They had these already identified.
Yeah, so they're going to be using that plan as the base, but update it for, in consideration of how things have changed over the last.
Yeah, and the development areas were key to transit stops and stuff, so transit oriented designs.
Right, and we went through a lot.
Yeah.
I think it was Nancy Jersey from SERPED who was doing it then. And I was a little taken aback that Grant King responded to your email saying you'd already set up a meeting with the planning board and the select board and conservation. And he said, emailed back and said, well, no, no, I don't want to see the planning board yet. I want to see the select board to present it to them to get permission to plan for the town. And last I knew, we're an independent elected board and we're in charge of planning, and I don't think that we need the select board's permission to plan. So he wasn't there when we did it the first time.
Yeah. So the last update I have from SERPED is that with one of their staff members, well, I think, Jim, you know, but I don't know if the, the rest of you all know on the board, that they've really aggressively hired a lot of staff in the past couple of months. And so right now, they're offering some free assistance to communities with grant applications. And so I've contacted their, their staff to see if we could maybe get something going with the state's coastal resilience grant to help get some funds to assist with implementation of the East Beach vulnerability plan. I'm thinking that the direction that we might head, this would, again, I need to flush things out with their staff and probably Buzzards Bay as well. But to, the direction we might go is to look at dune and beach monitoring. That was recommended in that plan, to start developing a baseline of data to further study adaptation and damage mitigation measures that we, we could take for East Beach and the roadway.
So I don't know if you know, because I think this came up before you were on board here. Buzzards Bay Coalition, along with grant funders, have started a plan to do a, a study of the coast from somewhere in darkness all the way to Sakana Park. And they have a million dollars, and they're going to do a big study. So maybe this could be coordinated for that.
Yeah, so.
So I think that they should, they should, maybe you can be the conduit between the two, but I think we shouldn't go off on our own trying to do the same thing that we're going to be getting with this.
Yeah, so I, I emailed Mark Resmussen this morning, and I said, hey, this isn't, you know, this is your area of expertise and this is definitely outside of my wheelhouse. And so I said, you know, are there any places where we can collaborate our efforts and, think about the big picture?
I think he would enjoy Westport getting some funding to add to what they're doing. But we just shouldn't be trying to duplicate things. So we should understand what they're doing.
Absolutely.
You should understand what they're doing.
Okay, next I have some updates on the Main Road Streetscape Plan. Last month, Amy and I met with a program representative for the Commonwealth Places Grant. So they contacted myself and Jim Hartnett based on our one stop expression of interest. They encouraged us to apply for this grant. And so what it does is it provides funds for place making activities, either the planning of them or implementation. And essentially what place making does is you analyze how people use and feel about public spaces in an area and use that data to make improvements or design amenities that get people, bring people out to, you know, walk around and experience and interact with each other in that neighborhood. So for example, it'd be like public art, community gardens, things like that. And so this would, this would help us spread out some costs across different grant resources. And so for this one, it's a, it's a smaller grant opportunity. It's about $10,000 to $15,000 to pay for. I think what we would use it for, based on our discussion with the program rep, would be for developing renderings of the recommendations that ultimately get developed from the planning process. He said that that would be an eligible expenditure, so I think that, that would be the route that we go with it. I, and so continuing some discussions I've had with trying to develop a working group, I met with the Bike and Walking Path Committee last month to provide an overview of the project. And the committee, you might imagine what they were supportive of it, and I was able to get two potential volunteers, one of whom was a volunteer on the sidewalk project 10 years ago, and he has also provided some in-kind engineering support for that project. Keith McDonald, if you're familiar. So that's really great to have someone on board who has got some engineering background and experience with the previous attempt. And I also met with the Commission on Disabilities as well. I think we really need to make sure that if there's going to be some pedestrian infrastructure installed in the corridor, that we have a voice from the Commission on Disabilities as part of that project. And so Brian Cunningham is going to participate in that, on the working group. And I also have a couple of volun, potential volunteers from the community to be on the working group. Couple own businesses, other residents in the corridor. And I've gotten their preliminary commitment to be on, on a working group through a survey that I distributed with Amy and Nadine helped me put that together. And we distributed that, was that a week and a half ago? And we're getting a pretty decent response. I think we've, we're probably getting close to 10, 10% response rate, which for surveying is pretty good, even though it's a small sample size. I just, I just surveyed residents and business owners in the neighborhood. Wanted to get a sense for how people who live and come to this area every single day feel about these improvements. Yeah, so that's what I've got for the Main Road Streetscape Project.
So, so Michael, you, it sounds like you're getting to the point where you would convene a meeting of the working, of the group, as you sort of coalesce and figure out who's going to be involved?
Yeah, we're, we're getting to that point. I think the next, the next step is to, the next step is going to, well, what I'm doing right now is I'm working on drafting the two grant applications for it. And then after I get those grant applications drafted, I think we'll move forward with having a very initial meeting sometime this summer. And then grants will be, awards will get announced in the fall. And then that's when things will really start to ramp up as if we receive those awards. Okay, next I have the Route 6 rezoning initiative. We met with BSC Group last week to talk about how this, the regulatory framework will work for the rezoning. So for example, how land uses will be classified, how the zoning bylaws will require siting of structures, parking accommodations, and those kinds of things. And so the, the next meeting is really going to focus on where housing, commercial uses and industrial uses should be located in the corridor. And in order to help inform our conversation with the consultant, me, Mark, Jim, if you're available next week, and perhaps Roger, if he's available, are going to do a drive-through through the entire corridor to kind of spot out where particular land uses should be. And then we'll take that information, provide that to the consultant. And then lastly, I have another grant update. This morning, I submitted a grant application to the Division of Ecological Restoration Culvert Replacement Grant. This is something that we collaborated on with Buzzards Bay Coalition and the Westport Land Trust. Buzzards Bay Coalition provided the bulk of the work for this grant application. That was really, really appreciated. We applied for approximately $200,000 in grant funds to complete field data collection and conceptual designs on stream crossing projects. And these are three culverts in areas that they've determined to have high ecological value. Those would be Drift Road at Lyons Brook, Drift Road at Snell Creek, and Cornell Road at Angeline Brook. And another partner that'll be a part of this project, obviously, is our highway department.
Who at Buzzards Bay did you work with on that?
Um, I can check my emails really quick.
No, that's all right, never mind.
Mr. James, one of, one thing on these culverts, what I think you might want to talk to too is, is, so the engineer that was in here tonight, Sean Leach? He's the fish commissioner.
Yep.
So he has told me that there's monies that they can go after, like from the fishing licenses? Like some of these culverts, they're pipes. And so, I mean, since the Rivers and Streams Act in the late 90s, we've had to make bottomless culverts and bridges. So, I mean, some of these are heroin and so forth, and there might be monies that we grab through that thing.
Culverts can be major impediments, just like dams.
Yeah. It was Jason Clermont.
Jason Clermont.
Yeah, I did, I did talk to Sean about it. I forwarded him the application materials and really had many comments.
He's very knowledgeable, so.
But, yeah, that, that was one of the major, one of the major rationales of our grant application was to improve the downstream conditions for Seabrook Trail.
There's an awful lot of work represented in Lewis and Amy's report. It's really impressive to see.
There's, there's a lot of money out there, and it may not always. There's, there's a lot of money out there and it may not always be for the big-ticket item, which I think is the sewer, but trying to make those connections and make sure that the plans that we develop are not just plans that sit on a shelf and collect dust, trying to make that final push to actually implement.
Well, Manny mentioned fishing, you know. If you don't go after 'em, then you don't get 'em.
It's true.
A question. Do you find any agricultural grant opportunities out there?
So this one wasn't really necessarily for supporting agricultural operations, but as you know, we were talking about implementing agricultural buffers next to potentially a livestock farm or something like that to help filter out nitrogen runoff from, from those farming operations. I talked to Ross Moran, Ross Moran of the Westport Land Trust and I don't think we're really going to be able to find a partner to participate with.
CMAT may be an organization you wanna get to know. Just like the Coalition, I, I think this discussion you had on culverts is just a perfect example. If you find good partners like the Land Trust or the Coalition, they will help you write grants. They will turn you on to funding sources and it will turn into projects like removal of culverts that, as Manny said, turn into increased fish passage. And I think CMAT, Southeastern Mass Agricultural Partnership, may be such a partner. Their most recent executive director, Karen Shaw, just got promoted to run Massachusetts Farm Bureau. She's so good. And I haven't met, I don't think, the new executive director, but I think they could be another one who would answer the question about are there agricultural funding sources? Because I'm sure there are.
So four or five years ago, David Cole, myself, and Paul Schmidt met with the USDA people on Paul's farm. And we talked about what they had done in the Palmer River watershed, in which they had allocated like two or three million dollars for watershed improvement, money to go to agriculture uses so that they could put in manure management, buffer zones and all that stuff. And they had a lot of success doing that. So USDA funded an amount for Westport River watershed. And they had so much trouble getting farmers to even listen. And I think the last, it was like a three or four-year span where money was available. They finally got some farmers to do it in the last, in the last months of availability of funds.
And Paul chair's agriculture now. Paul chair's agriculture committee, yeah.
So, but they only used up like three hundred somewhat thousand dollars of the million something that was available. But if you do the arithmetic of what they did, they were moving like nine thousand pounds of nitrogen per year with this pitiful amount of money. And I've been talking with another person who owns a big piece of farmland. And he has some ideas on how to get the farmers interested in doing this kind of thing. As well as, I think that John had some good meetings with the farming folks. Were you here for that? For the, the Climate Resilience Committee act?
Yeah, 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 with the do raise.
Yeah. And I think that was a good sign, but I think it's mostly the younger people. But, you know, the older people still own the big farms and whatever we have. So I, I think in talking with this other person, I, I would like to sit down and talk with some people, maybe John and others that can listen and think, you know, see if this is a way to do it. I think there could be money out there to do this. But you've got to, it requires a different conversation than they've had.
I think, I think you need to identify with some issues of what we can do for them.
Exactly. It's like a, it's like a negotiation. So the negotiation isn't gonna be successful unless both parties go away with what they want, right? And so what farmers want is something different than what we've been talking about, even if it's free, I mean, it's a payment. So if you can, if you can fund something that they want in exchange for doing something that we want, I think maybe you've got something there. And they all need stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, so when we were at the watershed meeting, what was Phil talking about, those other farm stuff that hadn't been done years ago?
Well, there was one farm that was the Pimental Farm. It was a, a...
Feedlot.
Feedlot. It had three hundred cows, a great big herd of them. And, you know, it's unfortunate that he closed up his farm. I know them. And they're good people, but I think it was just, there's gonna be a better way of, of offering the farmers something in exchange for the, for the environmental thing that we want. So it is cheap. Even if you get them a new barn, it's cheaper than sewer.
So looking at that report, did you see, did you see the red numbers on the rainfall right up at the head?
No, I didn't look at that.
So, I mean, most of, you know, it got to the point where it was, during certain storms, you couldn't swim in it anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Very elevated.
This is a report. I'm not, I don't know whether that...
But what I'm saying is, that's possibly from the farm.
Of course, yes.
And I think it would be pretty simple to take a track up through that way and solve that problem and say, "Listen, this is what we could do."
The watershed already did something with the farm or the barn, was that? And that goes a little, they put a retention basin on the other side of the road to collect the stuff that came down the road from their farm. And at least get somewhat cleaned out before it went into the river.
And he, I mean, years ago, we used to have cows on the outside.
Right.
And he doesn't have cows that day. But, I mean, it's probably just some kind of simple runoff issue that...
They have the cows in the barn. You have to have it covered and smed and have it go into something. And then you scoop it up and it's, you know, it's, anyway.
You want to get on to the minutes?
Sure.
You want a motion?
Please.
Mr. Chair, I've read the minutes and I find them very complete. Although on the topic of the Stone Ridge Public Hearing, I note that my comment saying the developer had a lot of gall to name the main road after the forest he took down was missing. But be that as it may, that's okay. But I just note that for the record, that I think the minutes are excellent and I would move adoption of the March 7th, 2023 minutes.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also think they're, they're pretty, pretty darn good. It's just a tough meeting to write down.
You want a motion to adjourn?
I would.
Move we adjourn? Second.
Wait, wait.
Before we adjourn, just really quick on the long-term planning discussion. So when I met with the Commission on Disabilities, they did want the Planning Board to consider at a future town meeting some revisions to the Independent Living Facilities bylaws, just to encourage provision of accessibility features that go beyond basic ADA requirements. So that would be things like having lower cabinets, countertops, sinks, appliances, such that someone with a wheelchair could approach underneath and prepare a meal at a countertop or, you know, be able to reach the knobs on appliances and so on. So we didn't really, I told them, you know, we would have to do a, do some research and see what kind of comparable things are being done in other communities and what kind of percentage of dwellings would be reasonable to have that. But that was just something they wanted me to pass on.
Yeah, there was something, I mean, years ago, I don't know if they still consider, called universal design.
Right.
Right. And that's all about something that people from any age can, but primarily for older people, things like larger thermostats with digital, large digital readouts. And then, as you mentioned, the lower cabinet countertops and so forth.
Elaine Ostrak, who used to be on the planning board, lives, doesn't live here anymore, but she was on the Disability Commission, but she was also instrumental in talking about this universal design. And I think she was the one that helped, who was it that passed the ADA law? Was it George?
It was Bush.
George.
George, yeah.
George the first. And she, she was, she brought all her stuff down to the Smithsonian.
Great idea, it's all about.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We're getting the turn. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.